How are you?
Distracted.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's committee, the whole meeting. Like to call this meeting to order at this time. We have met official. We have met compliance with all of the notifications. Roll call, please.
Sarah Schuber-McConne.
Here.
Shelley Mowen.
Here.
Heather Goman.
Here.
Laura Gavsky.
Is excused.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here. President Steve Olson.
Here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment sign of sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, August 11, 2025. Are there any comments by members of the public? Thank you. Then we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Good evening. I have three informational items. Every August, I bring forward a draft of my annual goals and action plan connected to my annual goals. Um, as I drafted this in preparation for tonight's meeting, I was thinking about the conversations we had about nine months ago when we were drafting our strategic plan and some of the priorities that the board talked about, um, during those conversations. And so I wanted to focus on a couple areas of strategic planning as part of my annual goals and action plan. The first one being um, a very intentional effort to move that strategic plan forward with the four priority areas. When it comes to facilities and staff excellence and budgeting and all those different things that comprise the the strategic plan, and it means putting together a robust continuous performance report. Um, that really outlines our internal uh, action plan as administrators to move that along. So my work is really helping to facilitate that CPR card and bring the data points to you guys twice a year. And then my second goal that I'd like to focus on is really being more intentional as a superintendent, uh, not just next year, not just this year, but probably in the months beyond that, focused on improving our reading and our math proficiencies across all of our schools and all of our grades. So we've worked really hard to move the needle on graduation, but we need to now talk about once our students graduate, do they have the reading and the math skills that they need? Um, for whatever path they want to have. And so really supporting principals and directors with that instructional leadership piece, monitoring PLCs, monitoring classroom instruction, supporting staff, providing professional development, and all the things that go along with instructional leadership. So really looking specifically at that literacy and math piece. That sound okay?
Hmm.
It's in the draft form, so if you have any suggestions, I certainly can. But to me, those are the things that kind of rose to the top is we did a lot of that planning last winter in our strategic planning process, so.
I like in each one of the areas, how you listed your action steps and then the indicators, you know, what we are going to look at and really with your whole group of directors and with the principals and stuff. So maybe a lot of sense to me.
Right. So we just met with our admin team for our kind of our welcome back to school meeting and um, we have plans to monitor and work through that work at every one of our admin meetings and keep it front and center in what we do. So that'll be part of performance evaluation that I do with administrators and such too.
Are you going to have incremental goals for like each school as far as getting your math and reading?
Hmm.
Those progressive.
Next week, next week, we have all of our teacher leadership uh, teams coming into Cooper for two and a half full days of data review and action planning. So I'll be with our teams um, as part of that work and it was it'll be it was Kate, there's just um, so between Kay, Crystal, Deana, Jen, we've been kind of planning that agenda and looking at um, what do those action steps need to look like in our continuous improvement plans at each school? So that'll be the outcome of our meetings next week. Well, each school will have an action plan that'll be connected to the strategic plan. You're going to talk more about that later? No? Okay, then there you go. No, I couldn't remember what was on the agenda later. Okay.
Curiosity question, not necessarily related to this, but I've been wondering. So I understand reading and math is like the national push. What, when do you all look at other disciplines or what, when does that show up? Does it show up?
Well, I don't know. Do you want to answer that question? I, she looked eager. Yeah.
Use science as an example.
Yeah.
Typically, the thing that sparks content area work like that outside of reading and math is when the state either releases new standards or revises the standards. We don't always wait that long, but typically that's on a seven to 10 year rotation. And then we do a needs, kind of a needs assessment with that content area. And remember, those content here, those other content areas aren't assessed at as many grade level as reading and math are. And then we do unpacking of the standards and then some bigger scope and sequence work. So for example, um, sixth through ninth grade social studies, civics specifically, that has a new set of standards and scope and sequence from the state level a year ago. So we revamped our sixth through ninth grade civics. We're just starting the science conversation event with this middle school science teachers the last week of May, and then on August 26th, they are starting their needs assessment and unpacking. So I would say we typically do it based on when the state says their new revised standards.
Okay. And I think, I mean, literacy and math tend to be foundational skills that kids need for really anything that they want to do after high school. So those tend to be high priorities because we know those are two. Yeah.
And we have social studies data in fourth, eighth, and 10th grades. So the kids are assessed at the state level. Uh, and science at the spring levels too, so that is a little more intermittent.
Yeah.
Um, I'll share that information usually in the October report.
Okay.
Um, our state report card is has a number of factors that are built in, but the primary data sources in terms of achievement that are reading and math. Thanks.
Okay, uh, my second informational item, as I think is is exciting, uh, I'm very intentional about calling it a pilot program, however, for a couple of reasons. So I was introduced to Cartwheel this uh, winter. It is a telehealth, teletherapy product that is available to support students with mental health um, needs, providing telehealth, teletherapy. Uh, I have sort of personally, I have shied away from telehealth, thinking that in-person supports are probably, you know, um, ideal when we're talking in in general telehealth. However, recognizing the ongoing challenges that we have in Superior specifically, we've talked about Medicaid reimbursement. We've talked about lack of agencies in Superior. We've also heard loud and clear from our staff and our principals. The number one issue they face in our schools tends to be mental health challenges. And so I thought to myself, we've got to do something differently than we've done before because we just aren't seeing, we're actually seeing a reduction in and services, service providers in Superior. We just lost another provider last spring. So uh, we are piloting what is called Cartwheel. It is a program to support uh, mental health. They provide teletherapy to students, grades uh, K through 12. Um, when it comes to the younger grades, they do more of a family uh, therapy setting as opposed to individual one-on-one sessions with small children. Um, it is intended to supplement the already existing partnerships that we have in our schools like HDC or Lake um, um, Lake Superior Community Health Center, SOAR, Encouragement Clinic, those types of services that students have access to. It's not intended to replace them, but it's intended to add to the um, agency offerings that are out there. Um, it's not necessarily a free service to parents. It's, it is a cost that we are incurring. So there is an investment on the district's part to be able to provide this service to students. However, the cost is kept down through billing private insurance or Medicaid. So it's similar to how we currently provide those mental health services in our schools, but we're um, providing an additional investment to provide more wrap services for students who might need um, might need this type of service. And so the pilot program won because we want to make sure they're going to live up to the promises. So for example, they said there's virtually no waiting list for students who need the service. They have it available within a week or two of the referral. Um, but the other reason it's really a pilot is I don't know if in the next two to three years, given federal funding cuts as well as um, state budget, if we're going to be able to maintain investing in services like this. And we also want to see the data um, that's connected to this to see if it's worth the investment. So we're piloting it this school year to see what our staff thinks, what our families think, what the impact is on student outcomes, and we'll have data and reports available that will be able to answer all of those questions as to whether it's been a good investment and something we want to do beyond this year. So I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic this will be a great resource for our families and come uh, before school starts, we'll be advertise, not advertising it, but getting the word out that this is available to families. And so staff can make referrals for students as well as families can make referrals for their students as well.
Did you get like monthly reports on how many users and all that stuff?
Exactly. They'll tell us exactly what the referral rate is. So when a referral was made, what the turnaround was for getting that student services. Um, they also collect outcome data uh, on a regular basis. So we'll be able to see if it's making a difference. Uh, so I'm optimistic about it. Sure. We talked with Eau Claire recently. Uh, Eau Claire was one district that recently um, invested in this resource. And when we reached out to them, they said it made a huge difference last spring. They they piloted also last spring. So we'll see how this goes. Deana, I'm looking at Deana because Deana's helping. Carrie Hennessy is helping to kind of coordinate this effort. So we have training with our social workers and our counselors set up for back to school week, and then we'll hopefully have available for kids. So excited about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, for our students that do not have medical insurance, we would be providing payment for those. Um, the fee that we are paying would incorporate students who are underinsured or not insured. We'd be able to provide those services based on the fee that we pay. Yep. Okay. And the last update I want to share is another informational item, something that we've been working on since last spring. Um, looking for the board to help model and support our initiative that we've been working hard to plan for this summer. Ella's not here tonight because she is probably going to be setting up for the parent fall sports meeting that's happening here in the next hour. Um, but we've been working hard. David Coy's been a part of it. Um, Ella, um, social media. Uh, we're looking at really getting out positive messages about what sportsmen, sportsmen like sportsmanship looks like in the Superior community. And positive behavior, we need to see at all of our games. And when our Spartans are away from Superior, we want our families and our students to be good models for who we are as Spartans in other communities as well. And so we're going to be um, pushing a lot of messaging, pushing a lot of positive um, reinforcement for those who are exhibiting positive uh, school sportsmanship, working closely with officials and refs to make sure they feel supported, working closely with coaches to make sure they feel supported, but ultimately really trying to get at any sort of negative uh, messaging might be that's out there and to kind of reverse what that looks like and being really positive for our student athletes. So you'll see that kind of that push start come out right before school starts, right before the football season starts. You're going to see new signage, social media videos. And we've incorporated students to help us with this messaging. So that has been fun to engage with them this summer and getting so as you see it, please help reinforce those positive messages that we've got coming out. That is all I have.
All right. Thank you. First up on our agenda, Budget Insurance Committee with Catherine.
I have um, one action item, gifts, grants, and requests. Administration recommends approval of accept gifts, grants, and requests received in July 2025. I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I do not have any discussion items. And we have one informational item or two, our fund 10 revenue and expenditure preliminary reports.
David doesn't have a voice tonight, so.
Yeah, he doesn't have a lot of activity either. It's been a month.
I thought these columns labeled properly. It says 24, 25, and then it says 23, 24 fiscal year to date activity on the top of the expense report.
Did you say no, David?
He said no.
So we'll get the fixed reports next week? The number, like, we need a different report?
Numbers are correct. It's just the headers because of the whole report. The user fiscal year data.
So would column two plus column three equal to column four? Or is that what, or how does that work?
So the first is what our budget is for this year.
Yep.
Second one is um, how much we spent in the month of July last year. Okay, field and conferences, there's the appeals that are out there that we we have approved but have paid and total expenses.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're able to reference, like we adopted about reference last year's?
Yep. So if you see last year, 23, 24, we paid $2.7 million and this year we paid $1.45. That's all tracked down to computer payments, invoice payments that I paid last fiscal because we didn't pay this. Why?
Uh, I believe that ends my report.
Thank you. Operations Committee, Sarah.
I have no action items, no discussion, one informational item from Steve about the updated long-range facility plan. Welcome.
Again this month. Um, I'd like to um, share with you the long-range facilities plan. Um, these are kind of more high-ticket items with a focus on uh, gentle disrupt students, keep early learning. Uh, what's not included on here are like sidewalks, flooring, minor equipment, regular maintenance equipment, like covered bobcats, or more of that kind of stuff. So um, for zero to five, obviously, those are the ones that are going to impact us the most. Um, biggest one, middle school roof. Um, like seven sections on that, but it's very expensive and it continues going up as inflation goes up. Best net from last year to this year went up a quarter million dollars. Uh, so you know, if we wait another four years, it's probably going to be another million or so. Um, some of the other big ticket items that we're researching further is uh, a drainage issue on the baseball field. Uh, can't figure that out. And obviously, it's going to uh, costs a lot of money to potentially tear up the field, fix the drainage. It all seems to be draining out the backside and washing out the bank and sloughing off into that creek that's back there. Um, the football field, we got a report back on it. Um, you can do so much maintenance, but sometimes stuff comes to a point where the more maintenance you do on it, the more damage you're it could cause to it. And that's what's happening with our football field. UV rays is hitting the artificial turf, making the turf fibers brittle. And the more we rake it and kind of fluff up that infill, it's damaging it more. Eventually, you won't have any more of that uh, those fibers and it will impact traction. Uh, we also did a hardness test on it uh, around the center field and then the two goal lines are are the hardest parts of the field right now. Um, with that test, we also did uh, the baseball field and softball field. Softball field looked amazing. Um, baseball field, a couple of areas of hardness, the pitching mound, obviously, the catcher's mound.
Home plate.
And uh, yeah, catcher's mound, home plate, yes, thanks. Uh, and then first base, those are like your, your three areas.
So Steve, can I just stop you just a second? So on that baseball thing, are are we in contact with Rettler then? Um, at all? And I can't remember who our project manager, project manager was at the time, but um, but I, I know what the problem is and where it's happening. So I'm wondering if they're involved at all of, of helping you find solutions or?
I haven't reached out to that company that put that in or project manager.
Okay.
Right now, my, my next step for that is we're going to find a company to scope the uh, stormwater drain, just to make sure it's not blocked. This issue's going to happen ever since it started. If you look back on the GIS maps, you can see it. And it leads to believe that something wasn't done right to begin with, but that was a long time ago. And now we got to try to figure out how to fix it. So yeah, and then the farther out you get, the five to 10 year mark, um, you know, those can kind of happen slow either way, depending on the maintenance, depending on weathers that we have. Um, one kind of a maybe a more nice, nice to have, I, I think it'd be going to fit that district is that school forest building is just to be doing, turn into like a lodge. Now you go up to the school forest. It's not a rundown cabin. It's a something nice and you know, pride in. Uh, and then the, you know, the, the boilers, um, that's just something, once those quit, if they quit in the wintertime, you just double, triple that price to fix it. Questions?
Thanks for the fabulous news.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Believe that completes my report.
Thank you.
All I got.
That's all you got.
All I got.
Well, then you're going to go to Shelley with the policies and rules committee. Great, good.
I don't want to nick, nick first.
I'm very excited. How can I present you?
Yeah.
Let's go to another first and now negotiations. I have one action item. Administration recommends approval of the August new hires and separations report. Motion to approve.
Second.
Shouldn't have a second. Is there any discussion?
I will say that we're in a good position right now for hiring, so that feels very good. Molly's not here tonight. She'll be here next week if you have any questions, but.
Any open spots?
It's zero.
Zero? So we.
I think we've hired every, there was one last position at the middle school. Has that been hired, you know?
Yeah.
It's a new, yeah, yeah. So I think we're in the middle of now looking at support staff positions. So awesome.
Oh, wow.
Right.
That's good. Yeah. Their fingers crossed. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No discussion items, no informational items, and that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Now we'll go to Shelley.
Great.
She's going to take a big breath because she has a lot for the Policy and Rules Committee.
Hey, administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates.
These all want. We have to take them separately.
Let's see this.
Yeah.
First, first reading of policy 1120 organizational chart. This policy is being updated to reflect the most current organizational chart.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Are all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay.
All opposed? And motion carries. Next is the reading of policy 5113, Enrollment Program, inter-district. This policy is revised to incorporate verbiage regarding requirements to review a special education student's IEP to determine both space and availability.
To approve.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Recent policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization. This policy is rescinded because its contents are fully incorporated in policy 5330, Administration of Medication Emergency Use.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Recent policy 5611, Due Process Rights. This policy is rescinded because its contents are included in the more applicable policy 5610, Suspension and Expulsion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just want to reiterate, all these changes are pretty minimal and just come from Neola recommendations to clean up some of our existing policies. So.
And they're in other places.
And they're in, yeah, there's a lot, there's some duplication. You're going to see some cleanup work too when we get to the informational items. And uh, so minor changes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recent policy 5710, Student Complaints. This policy is rescinded to avoid confusion regarding sources of student opportunities to raise concerns or complaints through appropriate channels.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This one is specific too. We have a complaint process. So following that complaint process and a different policy, that's what they're referring to in that explanation there. That they would follow the same policy as any other stakeholder.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Like in a student handbook or where is it?
Well, it's in a random policy. So you've got conflicting policies that sort of give students one process and everybody else. So we're just saying everybody follows the same process.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
But is there discussion? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move into informational items. Should I just read through each of them all at once or two?
You can read all the way through them.
Okay. Recent Administrative Guidelines 2464B, Identification of Academically Gifted Talented Students. This guideline is being removed because its content does not align with the most current ELMSS handbook. Recent Administrative Guideline 2260.02, English Language Proficiency. This guideline is being removed because its content was moved into policy 2260.02, approved July 14, 2025. The newly approved EL handbook has the most current guidelines available. Recent Administrative Guideline 5200A, Truancy Flow Chart. This guideline is being removed because its content does not align with the most current attendance expectations in the student handbook. Rescind the following guidelines listed below to make sure we are in compliance by directly adhering to the relevant legal statutes rather than internal guidelines. Recent Administrative Guideline 1111A, Revising Job Descriptions for Compliance with ADA 504. Recent Administrative Guideline 1111B, Verification of Employment Eligibility. Recent Administrative Guideline 1400, Revising Job Descriptions for Compliance with ADA 504. Lastly, Recent Administrative Guideline 5710, Truancy Flow Chart, rescinded due to deletion of policy 5710 above. Moving into discussion items. Um, Review Board Operating Principles for the 2025-26 School Year.
So we have that document in front of us and then we had a copy of it last week. As you look that over or have time right now to look it over, is there anything that you wish to discuss on it? Is this something that we can generally as a group uh, agree to on how we will proceed and operate?
I think it's important to note, I think you guys put this together, was it a year ago at a board retreat or was it two years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Good to me.
It made, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Just be respectful and professional.
That's it.
Okay. You do that, Sarah.
All right, um, next discussion item is the All right, um, next discussion item is the Wasby resolution submissions are due by September fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
I personally don't have anything for you guys to be thinking about unless you guys had talked only about having any. Legislative items, I mean, there's typical budget stuff that we're not in a binding budget. So we may not, you know. So I, I, I don't have this thing, so as you guys have talked about. Items.
Things come up that, that I'm aware of.
Okay. We just, this is something we put on annually because sometimes we get caught like the cow before the fifteenth, people are like, oh, we wanna put a resolution together and then we get caught like with a short period of time drafting that, so. If anything comes up, we can add it to next week or maybe we can always add it to the cow for September too, but like I said, the turnaround just gets hard. That's my report.
Thank you. Teaching and learning, Mr. Schumacher.
All right, no actions, no discussion items, informational items, Crystal. It's the director for human starts on staff development days, new teach orientation.
Okay, um, I thought I'd just tell you a little bit about what's coming up this month, it is. One of the busiest months, if not the busiest month for our department and getting ready for the school year and one of those things is planning for our staff development days. Early next week, Amy's gonna be sending out her welcome back email to all staff. That will include, uh, details and time and location about when the welcome back for all staff will happen, which will be on Monday, August twenty fifth. Following up from that email, I will then email the teachers with a schedule of what their staff development will look like. Anytime they're gathering with like their teacher colleague groups or PLCs or grade levels. Between the twenty fifth and the twenty eighth during our four staff development days, so they'll know what to expect and where to go and that's all very routine. We used the feedback from our teachers who filled out the survey last April. To plan our days and how we want to use them, so we're listening to their voices about. How much grade level time versus building time, et cetera. We will on August twenty sixth during that grade level and subject area time. Do a lot of, for example, what Catherine asked about earlier, unpacking standards, looking at data for the content areas that we'll be digging into that. So that's a little bit about the twenty fifth through the twenty eighth, um, what's happening for staff development. And then I did put a link there because the schedule is ready to go to our new teacher orientation week, we have five days with our new teachers. It's a lot.
It's a lot.
One and a half, one and three quarters of those days, they get to spend in their school and their classrooms getting things ready. Um, but we, um, have a lot of things planned for them, some training things, some learning, some meeting their mentors. We'll have a welcome breakfast with the principals, they'll learn about all the schools in the district, there's a lot of topics. On the orientation schedule, so I thought you might like to see what we do to onboard our teachers. We're planning, uh, for twenty people to be attending that, we have a few long-term subs. Um, in, who've been in the district and some of the things they would come to are a little redundant, so they don't have to come to all the parts. Or if there's been a teacher who maybe left our district and only has been gone a year and now is returning. Sometimes we don't have them come to all of the parts, it would be really redundant, so. About twenty is what we'll plan for at most of our orientation week. Do you have any questions?
For staff development days, you said you're listening to what teachers are saying, what are some of the themes?
Uh, teachers continue to say that at some point during the school year, they want some element of choice in what they do, so we're planning for choice sessions. On our February staff development days. They definitely, uh, value very much having PLC time with their smallest group of teachers that they work with. So there's always PLC time built into building time or during the morning of the twenty sixth, especially for the secondary level. Um, we will spend the twenty sixth in the morning for elementary teachers on more literacy training for our new resource, so those are a few of the themes.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Is the new teacher orientation, is that for subs too, you said, or just, are you saying long-term stuff that are not being needed teaching?
So, um, our day-to-day subs that Molly hires, they have separate training and PD sessions that we offer throughout the school year. Um, but we sometimes have people who've served. In a long-term sub role, maybe for a whole school year and they were part of all of our PD. In one school year, that would be redundant to then come to all of five days again, yeah. So maybe like on our restorative practices or PDIS, if they've been a long-term sub here, sometimes they know those things. And I think we, we have two of those this fall where we hired long-term subs that will now be contracted teachers with us. And we have a few people returning, been gone just a year or two and. Missed our district so much, think that. Thank you.
All right, Gena Hagen, Director of Student Services, presentation of twenty twenty four bio seclusion and restraint data.
Um, before I start, I think there was a little technical glitch with the, um, paper you had in the packet. Did you wanna explain it or do I need to?
I think the biggest thing is this is the current report that they printed for you today and Ann will put this attached to the regular agenda for next week, so. The one that was attached to the cow, there was a couple errors in it, this is the accurate one and it'll be attached also next, next week as well.
Yeah, perfect, I just wanna make sure you were looking at the right information. Um, so yes, I'm gonna talk about a physical restraint and seclusion in schools and before I. Talk about the data from last school year, I'm just gonna talk about some of the key points when it comes to this. Um, because there are, and there are many laws that, you know, guide us in this, it's a very kind of serious. Uh, thing that we, that we have and it is, um, physical restraint and seclusion. Are, are tools that we have in the very few crisis emergency situations we might have with students. To intervene when it's kind of the last resort and other things have been tried as far as like verbal de-escalation and. You know, moving other kids away and things, sometimes we just have some kiddos that need a physical restraint. See an intervention, but I'll just kind of read to you, um. What the law says, because it kind of really explains it well. It permits the use of physical restraint or seclusion only in circumstances where a student's behavior presents a clear, present and imminent risk to the physical safety. Of the student or others and physical restraint or seclusion is the least restrictive intervention feasible. That's just kind of the definition there, just to kind of get into the individual definitions, just so you know. Um, a seclusion is when it's, it's an involuntary confinement of a student apart from other kids. Um, in a room or in an area where the student is physically prevented from being able to leave that area. It can't be like a locked room or anything like that, there's staff with them, um, but they're, they're being secluded in a way that they're not allowed to run and. You know, hurt themselves, which is feasible, um. The physical restraint, um, definition is where that's, you know, where a staff member is restricting them from being able to freely move. Um, and only again, you know, used in those emergency situations. Um, so this, um. These rules, um, apply also to our four K, um, programs all the way up to twelfth grade, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Um, and then what else did I wanna say about this? Um. Okay, so then when there is a situation where this happens, there are, um, very specific timelines and documentation that we have to follow. As far as like every time there's this situation, there needs to be a debriefing among staff and that has to be documented. And then, um, with students that have IEPs, if there's, um, two times in a school year that they have an incident happen. The IEP meeting, the IEP team has to meet, that's a requirement as well to figure out. You know, what to do differently or, um, what planning needs to happen. Um, there also needs to be, um, so anyone that does a physical restraint has to be trained. And so we have a trainer in our district that. Militator, um. And each year we figure out who in each building needs to be trained, um, based on, you know, the past year and years before. Technically only one person in a school needs to be trained, but we train a group of people because. It's always, it's best practice to have more than one person, um, in a situation like that, so that's, um, you know, you have. Uh, several eyes watching the situation, uh, we use a company called Crisis Prevention Institute, CPI, to train. Our people and so then, um, there's also in statute laws around like. You get, you as a board have to get a report every year by October first, so this is what's gonna happen tonight. Um, and then I also have to report the data to DPI by December first every year. So those are all kind of the big rocks around this topic, is there any questions on that before we move to the?
Yeah, an example, physical restraint.
Um, yeah, so. One that I've seen a little more often is like a two-person, um, kind of maneuver where, you know, there's a child that's. You know, maybe here and then you have one person on each side of the child to kind of. You know, it's still a movement situation, but you're really restricting them from running away and then usually that's. Used to like transport them to a different location, it's kind of a situation where the, you know, you have your body up against the, the student to really brace. Um, you know, so arms aren't flailing and things like that, that's one example.
Like we might have young students who might run, want to run out the door, there might be a street out there. We don't want them running out the door, so guiding them away from that front door or wherever, that's just an example of guiding them away from that danger.
Yeah. Um, so if you look at our, our district data, um, the data continued, the numbers continue to go down. I mean, I, I am all, all of a sudden using the word almost nonexistent. Uh, when it comes to the numbers that we had last year, um, we didn't have any physical restraints or seclusions of any students that, that, uh. Don't have an IEP, there were none of those and then we only had fifteen total incidents across our four K through. High school, um, between the seclusions and restraints, um, within the eight students involved across the district. So and only, you know, a couple incidents at most, um, with all students, so. The numbers continue to significantly decline and I think that's because, um, just there's been a more focused look at, you know, the training. Scenarios, making sure there's good teams in place at the schools, but the most important piece around this crisis prevention is verbal de-escalation. And the strategies, because when they're trained, um, it's, you know, it's a day to a day and a half of training. It's mostly focused on that verbal de-escalation and how to interact with kids so you can bring them down instead of. Ramp up the, the emotions and get to the point of the emergency, so.
When you look at that data, uh, it's, it's accurate to say that, um, we do continue to have a higher proportion of students identified on the autism spectrum disorder at Cooper. So you know, that might be, um, because there might be some non-verbal struggles there, right, so that might be why that data looks a little different.
Yep.
Well, that's interesting, coming out of COVID though too, and just readjustment.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Would a physical restraint, would that automatically? Um, push the seque, seclusion number up, are they?
No, they're separate, separate incidents, yes. Any other questions?
The two incidences that involved the police officers were those one student or two students?
Two students. Yeah, we didn't actually start tracking the police until last year, so why there isn't numbers on other years.
Is that required by DPI or did we just choose to do that?
It's required in the.
Okay.
In the law.
Yeah.
It's awesome to see the numbers going on though.
Mm-hmm. And they've done a lot of work in their department that are on the second page there, so you guys have done a nice job intentionally working through that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Gena.
Thank you, thank you.
Jennifer Willoughby, working for childhood and the education summer school.
Good evening, Jennifer. Summer school was officially done for the year, uh, and I think it was a great success. We had about twelve hundred seventeen students, um, enrolled for summer school this year, which is about two hundred more than we had at last. So we saw a nice increase, um, this summer we offered geometry at the high school for a handful of students, well, fif-. Fifteen, I believe, participated in that, fourteen, fifteen, um, and then we had, uh, fifty five students participate in Spartan manufacturing. Um, that is, that was, I think forty five was the number of middle school aged kids and then we had a handful of high school students who were there working on. Um, volunteer hours and senior project, things like that. So that was great, wrap that up, um, and we had great success, great interest in. Heard positive things, yeah, nice students. Um. Funny for sure, we're already kind of looking into some different things, I met with UWS this morning to talk about. How we can collaborate services and programs so that we can continue to support our families who are. The hopes would be that we could offer some programming at the same time so that we can have them in the morning, feed them breakfast and lunch. Uh, and bus them to UWS to participate in, I mean, camps or programming offering over there, so. They are gonna start thinking about some things, they already had some great ideas, so that was a nice conversation. Um. YMCA continue to coordinate with them, um, we're looking at, uh, hopefully being able to offer wrap care next year on Fridays. Um, even though we don't hold summer school on Fridays, uh, again, just looking for ways we can support our families, so the YMCA offers wrap care. During the four weeks of summer school right now and we bus them to, uh, the school site that they're at to hold that programming. Um, however, they've been offering it just Monday through Thursday, the same program as the summer school, so. Uh, Fridays, we heard from families was a bit of a barrier in having attendance, so. Again, just looking at different ways we can remove those barriers for families. Um, we're planning to start enrollment early, uh, earlier next year, so we'll, we'll be ready to push out information at conference time in the winter. Um. Principal shared that information with me and said that that sounded like a good plan, so we'll be ready to do that. Um, all of our enrollment, we're gonna try and get through power school, so transportation, wrap care, um. Summer school, where maybe you're looking for, everything will be in one, one-stop shop, uh, for families, so trying to help. Um, that piece and then really just looking at times of programming and working with transportation and food service so that we. Have some nice coordination with, with what we're offering, so. I'm excited, but we're already, we're done with this year and already starting to plan for next year, so if that's, I have any questions about summer school?
What was enrollment versus actual numbers, like it's a pretty.
Yeah, so attendance, we don't have great like historical data to track, um, attendance trends. This year, I would say on average forty-four percent of the students are absent any given day, uh, which is. Pretty significant amount when you look at it, but that's pre-K through twelfth grade and including credit recovery and drama camps and all the things.
Yeah.
So, um, so yeah, I don't have great data on if we. Tampered off near the end of the year, I mean, I was really hoping to kind of see if this year offering four weeks straight versus previous years with a gap. Week, uh, with the Fourth of July being in the middle of the week made a difference, but it was really hard to capture that, that data, so Casey's working on it, but I don't know that. She said once summer school's done, she might be able to capture better data, but leading up to this meeting, there wasn't really great information.
Okay.
Did you all work with Northwood Tech for Spartan manufacturing in the summer?
They, um, Spike and Adam, uh, planned the whole bootcamp, um, experience and they worked with. They went on a field trip and I don't remember where.
Yeah, so they went to Northwood and.
Yes.
Northwood Tech and they went to Exis School.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
At Vicarion.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Cool, super fun, so my middle schooler did it, yeah, on Monday they did some metalwork in the metal shop and then Tuesday they made, um. Like a deck of cards sized travel, uh, crib boards, super cute, has Spartan manufacturing on it and then. Um, Wednesday they made, uh, flowers and welded them all together with bolts and stuff. and welded them all together with bolts and stuff, super cute, and painted them and then, and then Thursday they did their
whole day field.
Those are great.
Yeah, the field trip.
Honey, they had to wear pants, that was the big.
Oh, the big problem.
Close job.
They had to literally go by pants just to go on the field trip.
But yeah.
That's right.
It's super fun.
Month for leadership.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome.
Any other questions?
Well, we put, uh, elementary wise down to two schools again then or?
Yep, we held at, um, Cooper and Great Lakes this year. Next year, the plan will be Northern Lights and Bryant. It's going to alternate the schools just to help with the custodial staff and cleaners and things like that. Um, but we're going to continue to offer it at both schools.
We had a debrief with elementary principals and they felt pretty strongly that more consolidation would not be beneficial and the two sites were good.
We would see more decline in numbers if we consolidated them.
Well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Steve.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
The show, this is just a question, um, so next week I, I'm going to be out of town for the entire week and in the event that our vice president is not here again, am I able to just, um, assign? I'm going to try to.
Yes.
You're in charge.
Virtually.
Kyle, you're in charge.
Fine. Get ready to read then, okay.
Well, let's clarify, let's clarify with Laura, if she's going to be here.
Exactly.
And then if not, we'll talk through what, uh, options could be, yeah.
And I'm, I am going to do my best to join virtually, um, but I think it's better that somebody be physically here to take the whole agenda. Shall we? All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Favorite signifier by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries, you know, next Monday.
It's a light agenda. I did too. I told my son, I was like, you gotta come get me up, good.
That's all right.
It's gonna work now.
Kind of looks like, yeah, policy that's like.
Four.
Hold by it.
Yeah. Did you want to come with?
You're bad or no?
Home with eleven. Honk when I drive by.
See our new neighbors aren't in?
They move in? Mary's the best, yeah.
Yeah, but it's still student, middle school student.
Yeah, they're like, they're us. No, I was super sweet, I said, Mary, I know you're not, but I've been a question anyways, so they have. We have days right, so.
God work.
And they were super excited to be close to Great Lakes.
The end of the year is right. At a place up in Grand Rapids, down the lake somewhere, even though.